Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February 7th, 2018 meeting of the Danville-Bull County Planning and Zoning Commission. We thank you for your presence and taking interest in the business of planning and zoning and taking the interest in your community. If you feel by way, we will begin in prayer as tradition. Our God in Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this day and all the blessings of it. We thank thee for the health you've given us and allow us to be up and about again this day. We thank thee for this community we live in. Thank thee for the safety and protection you've given us and the freedoms that we enjoy. We continue to pray for our servicemen and women who defend our freedoms and fight and protect for us. We pray that those conflicts could be resolved and they could be back home with their loved ones as soon as possible. We pray for our government that continues to struggle with issues in our country that you would be with and blessing them. May they make decisions that will unite us as a people, unite us as a country, and bring us back to the country you would have us to be. Be with us as commissioners today. May the decisions we make here be for the betterment of this community and for all the citizens involved. God guard, direct us in all things. Forgive us when we fail you. Last, save us in Christ's name we pray. Amen. Call the meeting to order. Have a quorum. Item C is approval minutes, January 3rd, 2018. Jim Moose, we approve.
No second.
Terry Second, questions, discussion on the motion to approve minutes of January 3rd, 2018. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Item D, financial report for December 2017. Anything on that, Stephen? Anything you want to share? Everyone should have a copy of that in your folder. Take a moment or two to look at that, see if there are questions.
I'll make the motion, we approve.
Terry Moose, we approve.
Second.
And David Second, questions, motion on, or discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Item E, letters of credit, Hunt Farm. Stephen, you want to share some information on that, please?
Yep. Took a minute or two here. You guys know every month in your packet recently, we put a list of the bonds that we're currently holding, either letters of credit or cash. You guys see that every month. And I think a month or two ago, there was some discussion about how we manage those, what those are. There's been also some questions at fiscal court directed at me at least twice now about those bonds, specifically the cash ones that we've been holding and completion of those projects. So Hunt Farm, section 1, 2, 3 is specifically identified right here below because what I'm going to ask you guys is to hear some facts about it in a little more detail. And fiscal court has asked, or the county judge has asked really, and a magistrate, and we have a magistrate here, that we get some direction from you guys on how we get this Hunt Farm project done. And there was a good article in the paper, hopefully most of y'all saw it, but I think it outlined fairly well what our options are, but we can go through those. But basically, I just want to walk you through how we got to where we're at. Some stuff went out in your packet, kind of in reverse order from 16 backwards. I'm going to work from 6 forward. And then again, just ask you guys to think out loud about what we need to do with this specific bond amount. Mr. Jody Sharp's here with his legal counsel, and we've been talking, and we may even have an idea, but obviously without the planning commission's direction, you know, I really need to hear what you guys prefer to do, either with this money, let it sit there, finish the project, don't finish the project, whatever. There's lots of options. So, and before I do, you guys didn't get this, but I'm just sort of, because it was impossible to put in your packets, but you did get sections 1, 2, and 3, but this is the entire preliminary plat that was approved in 2006. So this is the 149 lot subdivision that was approved in 2006, and then sections 1 and 2 were final platted in 2006, and then section 3 came in. So this is the entire subdivision. That's the game plan that was set way back whenever. Letter credits were posted for sections 1, 2, and 3, and I'll walk you through that. And ultimately, some lots platted, some homes built. Bond eventually was converted from a letter of credit to cash, and we've been sitting on that cash approximately since 2011. And now you've got 28 homes out there in those three sections, and folks still don't have their street finished. The county's interested in getting that street accepted, that public street, but they can't accept the street until the street's complete, and it's not complete. Developer, it's his project, but we're back-stopping the project with a bond, and there's still streets and sidewalks to finish. So the amount of money's an issue, timing of the completion, our role in the completion, all of these are issues. But what we want to do is come up with a game plan to get this thing done, so these folks can get their street done, so the county can accept their street. And we need to just come up with a game plan. Again, that's our role as a planning commission, but, and we're holding some money. So, but we've talked with the developer, and I think we've maybe got an idea here, but I just want to walk you through a few things, and then the developer can tell you a few things, or you guys can ask me questions. But I think we're all familiar with what our role is under the sub regs, that, you know, we bond these public infrastructure improvements. We hold a backstop in case, normally if something goes awry, we come in and finish it. In my experience, in doing this, I held a lot of bonds, culled a lot of bonds. I've finished personally several projects as director of a planning commission, but normally that's in the situation when the developer has gone bankrupt, passed away, gone out of town, gone. And the planning commission then has no choice but to finish the project because we're holding the money. I can tell you, I've never finished a project where the developer was still around and selling lots. But I have finished a project where the developer was around, but there was another particular with drainage that only the planning commission could solve. So we had to go in there and fix this so we could move on to the next phase. So I'm familiar with how we do all this, but I can tell you here in Danville-Bull County, you guys, from where I went and looked back, have only twice finished a project, and that was in the city years ago, where developer didn't finish it and never got done. You all gave the staff direction to get it finished, and then coordinated effort with the staff in the city, Public Works, we went out and finished two subdivisions. And there wasn't enough money in either case. So that's kind of where we're at, and that's why we have to be, think through a game plan here, because this is where we're at today. We do not have enough money to finish what's left, and we need to get this subdivision done, or we could sit on the money another few years and just hope it gets done. So with that, I'm just going to walk you through some just quick numbers here, and just tell you where we're at. Again, 2006, you guys, you guys, I say you guys, the planning commission approved a preliminary plat for 149 lots. That was with streets, curb, gutter, and sidewalks on both sides of the street. So that was the plan, put sidewalks on both sides. Sections 1 and 2 containing 25 lots were approved and recorded in April 2006. Section 1 bond amount was set at $20,097 with 10% contingency. Section 2 bond amount was set at $14,091 with 10% contingency. So 1 and 2 were filed with bond amounts. 3 was then platted later in October of 2006, and that bond amount was $18,480. So then the developer came in and put one letter of credit forward in April of 2007 for all three sections for $52,668. So that was initial letter of credit posted with us in 2006, $52,668. That letter of credit was renewed 2008, 2009, 2010, and what our subdivision regs, as amended with resolutions, say that your letter of credit's good for five years. After that five-year mark, the planning commission converts that letter of credit to another bonding instrument, which is cash. So we basically call the developer's bank and say that letter of credit is now being called, and we take it from a letter of credit form to cash, put it in a secure account to backstop that development. So that was done in 2011. 2018, today, there's 28 homes, either under construction, built, or occupied out there. Of those 40 lots that were platted, there's 28 homes, or under construction. There's two footers under construction too, but there's 28 homes. Most of them are built, folks are in. The preliminary plat, the remainder, is 109 lots. That's what's still left. That preliminary plat has been renewed 11 straight years. So, that's odd to me, but 11 years in a row, we've come and renewed the other 109 lots for future phases, and phases 1, 2, and 3 aren't finished, or sold out, or completed. So I guess that's part of the process. We can talk about that another day. That's for future discussion. Final street surface is needed in all three sections, along with sidewalks, along 36 of 40 lots. So there's four little small sections of sidewalks in place, if you drove out there, just across a couple of the homes. The planning commission currently has a cash bond of $51,7179. So one question I know someone may ask is, how come we don't have the $52,668? The planning commission, and recently we revised our fees. We no longer do this, but we were taking an admin fee yearly to, I guess, manage the money, whatnot. So we've been drawing down on that money the last 10 years or so, 100 bucks a year or whatever it was. So when we revised the fees, obviously that was a fee we eliminated. One reason, we really don't need it. Managing the money is just looking at the bank account once a month. Number two, it takes a little bit of that money away someday we might need, which is not good business practice on our end. So we've corrected all that, but there is only now only $51,000 and some change, when there was $52,000 and some change. So that's all we have. Talking with our county engineer, Dwayne Campbell, he's given me some price estimates, and be mindful of these, he's given me price estimates based on their state price contract and what they can buy asphalt for. And to give you one other little particular here, when the bond was set in 2006, we currently have a item in our sub regs, a resolution, where we set incremental bond pricing for streets, sidewalks, curb, gutter, blah, blah, blah. Those were done in 1998. So in 2006, we used 1998 pricing to set that bond, and that was at $5 a linear foot for asphalt and $8 a linear foot for sidewalks. So I can tell you, it costs a whole lot more to build sidewalks than $8 a linear foot. Costs a whole lot more to put asphalt down than $5 a linear foot. In fact, right now, the county-state price contract is $220 and some change, well, I got it right here, $220 and 1 cent a cubic yard. So it costs a whole lot more to put streets down than $5 a linear foot. But in 2006, the bond amount was set based on 1998 incremental pricing. That's something we need to correct into the future, where we kind of get current pricing as we set bonds. So tomorrow one came in, we need to price it at today's prices for asphalt, curb, gutter, concrete, whatnot. That is why we have somewhat of a problem. We really never had enough money back in '06, and then we called it in '11, and clearly there's not enough money to finish it. So what we're at with estimate totals, we have not bid this out, got estimates, but the county engineer gave me some just rough estimates, and we've talked with the developer about this, and we kind of all agree, these are fairly close. Section 1, just surface alone, section 1 would be about $74,90 to finish, and just street. About $52,50 on section 2, and about $68,60, so $19,600 is what it would take to put that final one inch of surface down on all three sections. So if we just did the streets, or someone just did the streets, at $220 a cubic yard, it'd cost $19,600 to put that last surface down on all three sections of street. The sidewalks would be approximately $49,900 to put sidewalks down, to finish the sidewalks. So that comes out to $69,540. There's Dwayne right there. So Dwayne provided me those estimates, again, those are rough estimates. So approximately, just short of $70,000 is what it would cost to finish this subdivision as far as sections 1, 2, 3, one inch of final surface, and putting sidewalks on the rest of the lots. So clearly, we only have $51,000. It's almost $70,000 to get this done. So our options, kind of like you all maybe saw in the paper I've talked about before, is obviously we can finish it, but we don't have enough money, so we'd have to use some reserves or figure something out there. We could build a part of it, like, for example, we could do the streets and not all the sidewalks, but that would not be my recommendation, because again, those property owners were promised the product by a developer who sold them a lot. And if we're going to go out and finish it, we either need to finish it all, or the planning commission needs to be indemnified somehow, that if we go out and do part of the sidewalks, all the streets, some of the sidewalks, just the sidewalks on this street, we don't need property owners coming back on us in 10 years going, hey, I thought I had a sidewalk, where's my sidewalk? That's where the developer and I have been talking, and their attorney, we think we may have a solution, where we might be able to figure this out with the planning commission doing a portion and developer doing a portion. But again, that's your all's decision. And then, of course, we could do nothing. We could just sit on the money a while longer. But obviously, six or seven years have gone by since we called the bond. 12 years have gone by since we set a bond estimate. It was already eight years old. I don't think that's probably where we want to go, let another five years pass and folks don't have their street. That base will continue to deteriorate at some point, and it'll cost more someday to pave this later. And of course, the worst-case scenario is we could take legal action against the developer. I don't think we're there. And talking with their attorney and our attorney, I think we've got a solution possibly. It's creative, but we'll let them tell you kind of what they're thinking. But as far as the planning commission staff goes, I just want to tell you, we've got $51,000 in the bank. This is one of four projects, in fact, that we're holding cash on. Two, we have letter of credit. We got a third in yesterday. And this is how the process works. We renew, renew, renew. We cash, we hold the money. At that point, our job is to try to get the project done, either through negotiation with the developer, or we can finish it, or we can ride it out. Obviously, if we have enough money, we can sit on the money and just wait till it gets done. So there's been a lot of interest in Hunt Farms, and a lot of folks have talked to me specifically since the day I got here about Hunt Farms, neighbors. 28 homes of 40 lots out there, good homes, hard-working folks, and they don't have a street finished. So I understand their frustration, and they're looking to the planning commission for a solution. And clearly, the fiscal court is looking for the planning commission to take a least direction, and then, of course, we roll back to the developer on that. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys might have. And again, the developer's here with his attorney. Mr. Campbell's here.
Make some comments first, if you have any questions.
Whatever you guys want. However, the chairman wants to do that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the vel brand or the attorney at this time.
I'm Stephen Dexter, today here representing Jody Sharp Construction Company. Thank you for your service on the planning commission. I know it's a thankless job, but you do valuable work, and the professional staff you have is exemplary, so thank you for that. I just, everything that Steve said was accurate. I don't have any qualms with what he said. I just have a few remarks I'd like to make regarding some of the context around the Hunt Farm, the situation, the economic climate, when the subdivision began, and then certainly we'd be happy to take any questions or have further discussion with you at that time. First of all, the Hunt Farm was purchased in April of 2004. And in the spirit of being a responsible, community-minded businessperson, the company also purchased an adjacent lot to the Hunt Farm along Kentucky 33 and donated it to the city of Danville for the construction of a pump station. And that pump station would facilitate sewer and water throughout that end of the county. The developer also donated $100,000 to that project and the completion of the project. Again, there were several other players, ACH Farms, North Point Training Facility, but this was a big project. And you're speaking about one of the developers today who played a critical role and donated the land and outlaying $100,000 in capital to ensure that there'd be proper infrastructure in that area of the county, including the Hunt Farm, meaning city, excuse me, water and sewer, instead of having septic tanks, which you know has been a strong push in the community to avoid development with septic tanks. So that's one point. Steve has already reviewed that the letter of credit amount was provided in October of 2007 for the completion of that public infrastructure in the Hunt Farms. And in order to just showcase some of the economic conditions around that time, I wanted to provide you with a handout that shows the total amount of single-family dwelling permits that were issued each year from the time the Hunt Farm was purchased until, really, 2017, or excuse me, 2011, when the bond or the letter of credit was cashed in. So you'll see circled at the bottom of each page, in the correct column, how many were issued, but just for the benefit of the public and for the record, I want to say, in 2004, there were 102 single-family dwelling permits. Again, that's the year the Hunt Farm was purchased by Jody Sharp Construction Company. In 2005, 96. 2006, 103. In the year the letter of credit was issued, 2007, 81. You can start to see a downward trend. In 2008, 36. In 2009, 18. In 2010, 27. And in 2011, the year in which the letter of credit was cashed, there were 17 single-family dwelling permits issued in this county, two of which happened to be by the developer in question today. You can see the downward trend of the Great Recession, and there was a time period where this town, a lot of good developers went belly up. So I wanted to provide that for some historical context of the time. During that time period, there were only three homes in the Hunt Farm constructed in 2011, three homes. Ironically, those three homes had sidewalks in front of them. Three homes in the Hunt Farm in 2011. And during that time, my client had provided and has continued to provide snow removal for the residents that are there. That's continued through this day, and so they have been provided for in a responsible manner, albeit it wasn't through county maintenance, it was through the private pay of the developer. Also wanted to emphasize that due to these harsh economic conditions, the development plans were delayed. I mean, I think a reasonable businessperson, any reasonable person, would have made a similar decision. It was unclear whether the conditions during the Great Recession would improve and when. And so as a result of that, the project was not completed. It was delayed. The letter of credit was cashed. There was a letter that was, from 2011, from Planning and Zoning, that provided the letter would be, quote, "cash to cover the cost of the work remaining to be completed," meaning roads and sidewalks. And it specifically referenced one of your resolution numbers, which was 930915A, which further states, quote, "if the public infrastructure is not complete, the letter of credit shall be cashed to cover the cost to complete the required public improvements." And my second handout will be a copy of that letter from the planning commission. Now, I should point out to you that the resolution that was actually cited in that letter is incorrect. It was replaced by this body, by an updated resolution, even though that's what was quoted in the letter. However, the language remains the same in what should have been quoted, and that is that if public infrastructure is not complete, the letter of credit shall be cashed to cover the cost to complete the required public improvements. Since that time, from 2011, 2017, 17 single-family dwellings have been built in the Hunt Farm, adding a value of anywhere from $2.9 to $3.1 million to the tax base. And again, during that time, Jody Sharp Construction Company has provided snow removal for the residents of the public infrastructure there. I also want to point out that there have been several attempts, and proactive attempts, to resolve this situation by the developer. This is not a situation that just came about because either the planning commission or its director or the fiscal court said, we want something done. This matter was brought about by numerous letters by the developer to Planning and Zoning, none of which, for one reason or another, dignified a response. So letters as early as 2016 and before show an attempt by the developer to have some type of amicable resolution to the Hunt Farm controversy. This is not an issue where you have a developer that has, quote-unquote, abandoned a project. You have a developer who is continuing to proactively build homes and has wanted a solution. So in this case, we are pleased that this meeting is happening here today to find resolution of this letter of credit matter. We should also note that on behalf of the developer, we have been working with county officials since at least as early as last summer to resolve this issue, have gone back and forth with different proposals and settlements of how to, in fact, resolve this matter quickly and efficiently. What's clear to me is that everyone wants a solution, the county, the developer, the residents. And today, you have an option, an opportunity to act upon that in a proposed solution. So we have a proposed settlement agreement, and I have a copy of that. I don't know if that was in their packet or not, so I'm going to pass that out now. Steve reviewed the exact dollar amount that you currently hold in the letter of credit, a little bit over $51,000 and change. I think the last number I had wasn't a reduction of the last administrative fee, but what this agreement will allow, there's some recitals at the beginning that discuss everything that I've mentioned here to you today, followed by an agreement to allow immediate steps to be taken to utilize the county-state bid contract, to have the final coat of asphalt placed on the streets with that estimated cost of, as Steve said, I think, $19,000, approximately $19,600. So we're talking about the final coat of asphalt here. We have plenty of money for it. It's sitting there. And once that final coat of asphalt is installed, then it will allow the planning commission, through its executive director, to transfer the $19,600, whatever it may be, upon submission of that invoice, to pay for that infrastructure. Again, this money is held for a specific purpose by you, essentially an escrow account for the completion of public infrastructure on the Hunt Farm. It's exactly what it is there for, and it can be used to compensate the contractor through the state bid contract. And since more than 51% of the homes are now completed in the Hunt Farm subdivision, the county can in fact officially accept it for maintenance as a county roadway and add it to their maintenance plan. Then the balance of the funds would be still held by the planning commission for the completion of public infrastructure, which would only leave sidewalks or a portion thereof, and the developer is prepared to propose a solution to that. Based upon the estimates that have been done, the funds that are currently held here after the public roadway is finished will allow for the completion of about 2,500 linear feet of sidewalks. That's significant. And we are prepared to propose a solution to that in which the developer would actually complete himself the sidewalks that would be on the east side of, I'm going to your map now, if you want to look at it. Yeah, if you hold the brown section at the top, that'll orient you north to south, meaning Buster Pike will be in the far right-hand corner. It would allow the public sidewalks to be installed on the east side of the Hunt Farm road, continuing, so in section 1 there, across lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then continuing along Max Cavanaugh's Road there through section 2. And with an agreement that, from the developer, that the residents that are in the cul-de-sac area there, that Tom Spragons Road. You'll notice from, these, these are homes that the developer has built for particular individuals in most cases, or has sold them. So they're, we're just talking about a first-generation relationship between the developer and those that actually live in the homes. And so there is, there's good communication, and there's actually positive relationship. The residents want the road done, to their credit. They're not as worried about the sidewalks as they are the roads. So what the agreement allows you to do, which the county judge has reviewed along with the county engineer, and they are in agreement with this plan proceeding, and I've reviewed this also thoroughly with your executive director, and it will allow the public roadway to be completed quickly, efficiently, in a cost-effective manner, preserving as much capital as possible for the completion of as many sidewalks as possible in the Hunt Farm. So I, I think the solution before you is a good opportunity to take one of these off of your plate. You currently hold four, and this will allow one of them to get off your plate, and in a manner in which you won't have to exude any amount of time or money. So just some final notes before we answer any questions or take any other comment is, in this case, we have a developer who has built 300 homes in Boyle County. That valuation is anywhere from 40 to 50 million dollars, which has impacted the tax rolls positively. His company's been committed to providing a supply, a healthy supply of affordable housing in Boyle County, which has been a critical aspect and foundation of economic development. His contributions have been significant as a responsible businessperson, and he has worked diligently to resolve this matter by being proactive, despite what some of the, maybe the public perception may be of the project, because it's been going on for quite some time, but simply through letters and communication with, with key individuals. And all the while, mind you, not neglecting the, the residents there in providing private snow removal. The solution before you is reasonable, it's rational, it serves the interest of Boyle County, it's residents of the Hunt Farm, and the developer, all while achieving your obligation to see that there's a completion of public infrastructure, and we would respectfully request that you vote its approval today. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I guess two questions. Just as a point of clarification, the proposal on the sidewalk completion?
Yes, sir.
With the exception of the cul-de-sac, does every existing home then, will every existing home out there have a sidewalk in front of it?
It's possible. The, the, where, the side of the street that I outlined to you is where there will be the vast majority of those linear feet constructed. It's possible that the residents on the other side of that street would choose to forego a sidewalk in front of their house so as to not have their yard disturbed. There is, this county has made it directive that there be sidewalks in all subdivisions. There may be cases where you can produce them on one side of the roadway and not both, if that's what those residents so choose. So going forward, there will be a conversation with the residents. On the side of the street that I showed you, which is the east side of the Hunt Farm Road and Max Cavanaugh's Road, there are already three homes that have sidewalks in front of them. The rest of those lots do not, but they do not have homes on them, and they could, the sidewalks could be built without disturbance to the current owner, with the exception of one home. And the residents in the cul-de-sac have indicated that they very, if they could get the road, the final coat of road, they would, in fact, waive that right. And the residents on the west side of Max Cavanaugh's Road have indicated they may prefer just to have a sidewalk on one side of the road so as not to have their yard disturbed.
I guess my second question is, why don't we have a copy of a settlement agreement that includes the sidewalks? This just covers the road?
It covers the road. It does cover the sidewalks, but it says that the sidewalks, once the, we don't know exactly how much the roadway will cost. Based upon when it's done, that price could fluctuate. So to me, this is a two-phase approach, which is what we've been working on for some 18 months. Phase one, finish the roadway, see what balance is left, and then propose a plan to complete sidewalks. I think it's what we would personally do in any budget, it's what a responsible businessperson would do, and it's what we proposed here, and quite frankly, is what's been agreed upon by the judge executive as, as a viable path forward, and the county attorney.
The asphalt's going to be on the entire subdivision, or just the completed portions?
Sections 1, 2, and 3, which is just where there are existing roadways now. Yes, sir.
We, we obviously have two really good parties, the builder and the city and county. But the people that are involved in, who bought the houses, they don't seem to be getting what they were supposed to get, and I think it opens up, first of all, the possibility of legal action. I don't know all those, I don't know every person in that subdivision, and I don't want to see that, you know, because for every, for every 10 people that agree, there's another person that doesn't. And you're going to, you know, put the builder and the county and city in a, I think we need to make things between, between the builder and the city work so that we're done with this, there are no legal implications, and I, maybe I'm wrong about this.
Well, that's, that's, that's why we're here today, first of all.
I mean, I find that really.
My opinion, my opinion. The biggest liability of the parties involved is the roadway. People need a safe roadway. Public, the school buses won't go on the road until the roadway is completed.
No, I, I don't disagree with that. But what about kids that have to walk to the bus? Okay, you're talking about the schools? I'm talking about the kids that, whether it's, are they going to get onto the street then because there's no sidewalk in that spot? Or do they have to walk across the street to get on a sidewalk so that when the bus turns around, that's how, you know, they do it? And I, I think, you know, there's a lot of, no matter what people say now, when something is wrong or there's a tragedy in the future, that all goes under the bridge, it's well water under the bridge, you can't fix that.
Well, you can have a, if you have the proper parties at the table, and people sign waivers, I mean, the developer could offer a minor plat amendment that would show sidewalks on one side of the street that you could accept today. City and county could waive a sidewalk requirement like this. We have subdivisions all over this community that don't have sidewalks. Old Bridge doesn't have sidewalks. And if children were walking to a school bus there, they could be struck and killed there just as easily or more so.
I lived out there, I know. That's why I'm bringing this up.
Right. So the fact of the matter is, there, when there is agreement between parties, you can come up with any solution and forego that liability.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
So, from my side, being the staff, for you guys, and I appreciate what Stephen's saying, I kind of agree with our commissioner here. We got one half of the agreement. We got one half of the agreement. I think there does need to be agreement on the sidewalks, this is kind of step two, and I think then we could probably get there. I'd like to see it go a little bit different, tad bit more technical, might be a little bit more of an issue for the developer, but it, it's the same general premises, that we would finish the streets under this agreement if you also chose. But the sidewalks, we would almost wrap into a new agreement with the specifics being that today, the rule is sidewalks on both sides. I got a set of construction plans, and so we're building those. What I would like to do is formally undo the sidewalks and put that burden on the developer to build those, and that would be revise the construction plans formally, show me what you're going to do on the new set of plans, where we're putting the sidewalks, left, right, middle, up, down, I, I don't care. Show me those on the construction plans, revise the construction plans, where we're going to build sidewalks, 2,500 feet? Let's bond it at today's prices. So when I build the street, we build the streets, and there's only X number of dollars left, let's get a bond amount of what it's going to cost to build what he's proposing, number one. Give me the difference in the money, or let's post a new letter of credit, but let's bond X number of feet of sidewalks, and then as he builds those sidewalks, we're starting fresh with a new bond, and we'll reduce that bond as he incrementally builds those sidewalks. I don't care what they build out there, if the neighbors are happy, that's the last part of that agreement. I would want to know that the property owners have signed off formally in some way on this new revised construction plan. So the construction plans get revised, they show me this new 2,500-foot where, when, the property owners have signed off on that revision, and we're holding the bond for what's left in today's prices. $11 of running foot for sidewalks is a number that's probably reasonable, developer may disagree, but I've talked with some folks, $11 to $14 what it costs to build sidewalks these days, depending how wide you go. $8 isn't going to get it, but we would, whatever's left in the money, we basically get a bond to supplement that we know we have enough money if those sidewalks don't get built in a revised plan. That's different than Stephen, just, just this, this agreement with, we'll finish the sidewalks, that almost has to be.
Well, no, I, I don't disagree with anything that you've said, and that's precisely what we will do. The point is, you can't propose a rational plan until you have, you know what the balance is going to be in the letter of credit. So the plan for you, I don't object to anything Steve just now said, but to me, I said it's two phases, it's always been two phases. The county attorney has agreed it's two phases, the county judge has agreed it's two phases. Today, we're asking for phase one, 1A, build the roadway. It's the most critical element needed in any subdivision. Before prices can increase, before the contract can increase, let's get this on the spring paving list, and in order to do that, we need you to affirmatively vote today. Then we'll know what that exact cost is, and it, you will hold a significant sum of money over the developer at that time to say, "We still have a sidewalk plan. We are saying in the agreement that the public infrastructure plan will be completed and presented to you." We can't do that today because we don't know exactly what the monies are going to be on the table, and we have to have some time to be able to put it together. The residents want the road, the county wants the road, the developer wants the road. We can achieve the, the lion's share of the infrastructure issues by this agreement. And then we will present a, a plan for the completion of the sidewalks at that time, and the developer will do them himself. You will not have to accept any, or advertise any bids, or do anything of that nature. This will be incumbent upon the developer to finish. He's willing to do that, he wants to do that, but we have to have the roadway done. We can't do sidewalks prior to the roadway.
Stephen, just for clarification, should we approve the street plan, what assurances do we have that the sidewalk plan then will come forward?
We have an agreement before you that says that it will be presented to you.
And if that's not held up, what, what happens then?
Well.
If, if the builder doesn't fulfill his obligation with the agreement, what, where does that leave us?
Same options you have now.
Well, piggybacking on what Jerry's asking, you know, would, would you accept that we forego any further action on the item that's later on today's agenda in terms of renewal of the preliminary plat revision for the other 109 lots?
That's a great idea.
Would you accept us holding any action, further action on that?
That's a great idea.
Table it until the agreement first.
That's a great idea. Table it, deny it.
I wouldn't table, deny it, I would table it.
Do what you, but that's a, that's a wonderful solution. That's, that's fine, and that's reasonable.
That, that was going to be my recommendation, that's later, but I was going to recommend that anyhow, that we not renew the preliminary plat for the rest of the phases, period, until we get done with the others. But I, I, again, I agree, Stephen, I mean, we're horse trading here, but I, I want something a little more formal than, let's do the road and we need to know the money. We can come up with an agreement that says we're going to do what we just described, and we need to plug in a dollar amount. We could come up with an agreement, developer will finish the sidewalks at X number of linear foot. We don't know what that dollar amount is till we pave the roads, you're correct. But I also feel that we shouldn't pave the roads till we at least have something very formal in writing on the sidewalk aspect, or the construction plans at least submitted with the revision. That would be good enough for me if I at least knew exactly where we're building the sidewalks, and that the property owners have signed off. Again, I, I kind of personally feel I want to get the road done, and I agree with Stephen, we want to get it done, we need to know what's left, but I really don't know if we can go forward with anything till we really understand that we, A, we've got the sidewalk, the, the property owners blessing on this, that they're okay with the revised plan, so I think the developer almost needs to get us a revised set of plans. Get me something that, with some assurance between now and March, we got time to pave, it's still winter, some assurance that these 28 property owners have consented one way or the other, there's time to do that, and then that's the basis of the structure of the sidewalk agreement.
I want to offer a friendly amendment, this is going to leave me concerned.
Hey, you're the lawyer.
For the, in paragraph four there, on number four, on page two, we talk about the balance of funds are going to be held for the completion, after the completion of the roadway, the balance are going to be held for further completion of public infrastructure as agreed. What if we offered this amendment? First of all, it is, it's February, paving can happen in March. So if we delay this another time in construction plans, we're talking about, we probably won't be back on the Planning Commission till, we have all those documents done, maybe till May. I think it's important that you get the roadway completed at the earliest possible time, it's what the residents want, what county wants. Why don't we say this? The balance will be, the funds will be held, and construction plans for, or the sidewalk construction plans will be filed for your approval within 60 days of completion of the public roadway. It's reasonable, that gives us time to garner the necessary signatures, prepare the necessary plans, and it allows action to be taken. Yes, sir.
That was, that was what I was going to propose, there needs to be something that sets it in motion without having all these people have to come here again, including the developer, and, you know, put it on the agreement now, just as you said, and then the action has to be taken within a certain amount of days. Of course, we're under the gun of the people who are going to pave the roads, but we know that that's, that's not the developer's fault. So, so basically, we can put a time limit on whenever that is finished. Is that, I mean, I'd like to, if Jody has anything to say, I'd, I'd love to hear from him if.
I think that's adequate.
Is that okay?
I think that's adequate, 60 days upon.
If he has other concerns, I mean, I'd like to hear him, just because I want to make sure we address his needs as well. I mean, it's.
Well, I think he's relayed those to me, and that's why I'm here for his behalf today, but thank you for that interest.
I just want to make sure, that's all.
Sure. But, but 60 days, I think is, if you'd like.
Come to the mic, Jody, please.
Yeah. The proposal for the street being constructed on the east side of Max Cavanaugh's Road was an original thought of mine, and I thought that would be, would simplify this entire process because it would provide for a street that would come from Buster Pike to the entire back of that development, and it would not encroach or interfere with any other properties that existed or that were in existence there. And feedback that I have had from the homeowners is that we'd prefer not to have our property interfered with, and if you could achieve that, we would be satisfied. Now, I'm not going to sit up here and say that, I can assure you that there will be a signature by everyone, much as I would like to, because you never know where recalcitrance will meet, after speak. Thank you.
But it'll be attempted, and if it's not, then there'll have to be a plan that is devised to the contrary, and that's why time is needed. And that's why this, this plan will allow the essential public infrastructure to be provided for promptly, maybe as early as March, if you can give a, some affirmative action today.
Stephen, would you consider another friendly amendment since Mr. Sharp has made the commitment of adding something more to paragraph four where it's clear that Mr. Sharp is committed to responsibility for the cost of the sidewalks, whatever they may be, whatever they, it works out to be.
Well, I, I think he is now. I mean, as a matter of law, I think he's, he's, you know, if the, he is responsible for, if I understand the, the situation right, it sounds like today, he's not going to have a prelimi, his, his plat renewed until this matter is resolved. So no further sections could be developed or worked until this, sounds like, conceivably won't be approved until this matter is resolved. I don't disagree with you that the developer is willing to accept the construction of the sidewalk planes, but we need to some, have, we don't know what exactly that plan is yet to this, to this stage.
Sure. That's why I was, just a generalized commitment to accept that responsibility, which I don't see in the agreement. So just modify paragraph four just a little more to conclude that, I think that'd be great.
I don't disagree with you that the developer is willing to accept the construction of the sidewalk planes, but we need to have, we don't know what exactly that plan is yet to this, to this day.
Sure. That's why I was, just a generalized commitment to accept that responsibility, which I don't see in the agreement. So just modify paragraph four just a little more to conclude that, I think that'd be great.
To conclude that the, that the developer will actually construct the sidewalks.
Yes, as, as-
As amended plans are submitted?
Yes.
Yes.
No objection.
Bruce, any other words of advice for us as a commission before we proceed further with regard to the entire process?
No, sir, I think, I think that the proposal is a reasonable one, and I don't have any further comments.
Thank you. Any other questions for Stephen, or Steve? Anything else, Steve?
Just thank you for your time and consideration of this matter. We know it's, I know it's been somewhat long-winded, but it's important, and it's, it's an issue that we hope can be resolved in this manner, and we think we have all the parties at the table, which is significant and not always achievable, but it is here, and so I would just, I'd respectfully request that you take a vote today on, on the settlement agreement. Again, the county has requested that you show some approval, tacit or otherwise, of how they want to proceed. The county wants to proceed in this way, and this is through discussions with its city, excuse me, county attorney and judge executive, and developer would like to proceed, the residents want the roadway, your executive director wants this off his books, certainly, I understand, and we think this gives you a path forward to doing that, so we would ask that you actually vote on this today, Chairman.
Bruce, also, would you be prepared to word a motion for us, that we get this, or how do we proceed at this point?
I think you can pass, I think you can pass a motion which approves the deal in principle, subject to Mr. Dexter and I working out the language. I mean, as I understood, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, as I understood it, we're, we're going to pave the street at the county rate, and Mr. Sharp's going to do that, and funds will be released from the, from the letter of credit to pay for that, and that, within 60 days of what, completion of the road, he's going to submit plans, plans for the sidewalk, new plans, or revised plans for the sidewalk, which will, I guess, in those places where there is no sidewalk, the homeowners will have to waive, they have to have a waiver of that, and then, once we know what the cost of those sidewalks is going to be, Mr. Sharp's going to post a additional monies added to what we have left to secure the construction of those sidewalks, which he's going to do, and, and we're going to withhold action on the preliminary plat for the remainder until the sidewalks are completed.
That's, that's right, just one minor correction, I think that you said that the Jody, Sharp Construction Company would finish the roadway, actually, it would be done by the state bid contractor.
Okay, sorry.
And on, to take advantage of that process, and then, the construction sidewalk, the sidewalk construction plans will be submitted within 60 days after the completion of the roadway, for which the cost will be borne by the developer, as agreed upon, and for that amended schedule.
I guess initially I thought it was going to be 60 days from now, not 60 days from completion.
Well, it all depends on, you know, when the roadway is done to determine what balance will be done. I mean, that state bid contract, I'm not sure when it turns, Duane, but it very well could be April. So if the roadway's done in March, it could be one price, if it's done in April, it could very well be another price, depending on when the state bid contract changes.
But would that affect the agreement?
Well, certainly, certainly, certainly. It would create, it would affect the balance of the funds, either positively or negatively.
I understand that, but we're still talking about 60 days perhaps from now to have a plan, sidewalk plan, as opposed to 60 days from road construction. I guess I just don't see how the difference in road construction dollars is going to be material enough to affect what the eventual agreement is.
The state bid contracts can fluctuate dramatically, sir, with all due respect. Yes, sir.
I still, I still say, I agree with everything that you plan to do in this proposal and the legal part of it, but I'm still concerned with the safety part of it, if residents decide not to put a sidewalk in on certain sides, as a, as a concerned citizen, and also I'm concerned, as a member of this body, with our legal responsibilities if something indeed does happen out there. I mean, it's something to think about, I don't know the-
Sure.
I don't know all the laws and that much depth, but I do know that-
I mean, you can talk to your council about that, I would, if it were me, and I'm not the counsel for this body, but I would, part of your job is to manage, that's what I do for a living, manage risk. You can, it was a risk to walk in this building, it's a risk to sit in that chair, you took the risk because you trusted it would hold you. Now, in another day, it may not, but we can, there are risks in everything that we do. Our job is to find the most significant risks and plan around them for solutions. There's risk for everything. What this solution does is allows you to take the biggest risk you have, which is the completion of public roadway, that is most advantageous to the county, its residents, and the developer, to be resolved. The sidewalk issue there could be children hit, if there are sidewalks there. So we can't protect around everything, but what we will do, and you, your concerns that you have, I think will be properly voiced, heard, and used to revise future construction sidewalk plans that are submitted to you. That's the time to have that conversation, when we look at the, the technical aspects of what will be submitted.
Yeah, but if you open the door to a higher risk incurred, that's part of our responsibility too.
But if you have individual homeowners, along with the developer, that file an amended plan, and that they don't have them in there, and they waive that off there, they lose that argument.
Well, I don't want either the developer or the city and county to be sued, that's all I'm saying. That's, I mean, this is the age of indictment.
Well, and quite frankly, sir-
And you can see that on TV every day.
Quite frankly, sir, there's nothing that would prohibit the residents of the Hunt Farm suing this body today for holding a letter of credit for five-plus years for not finishing their roadway. So there, there could be, I mean, there's liability in that.
Yeah, well.
Yeah. So there's liability all around us, is the point, we have to choose how to manage the most significant risks in the most efficient manner possible, which is what we think we have proposed.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Could we have Bruce restate what he was proposing? I think he was working on rewriting it up there.
And, and Bruce, I know yours was, I think I might have a succinct solution for you. I'm going to propose that if it's wrong, then you tell me, but I think you would move to approve the settlement agreement with paragraph four being amended as follows, that the developer will provide updated sidewalk construction plans within 60 days of completion of the public roadway, and will agree to post assurances that the project will complete, be completed accordingly.
That you're, I guess what I was thinking, you were going to continue to say was that he present the plans, and once the plans were approved, he'd, he'd construct the sidewalks in accordance with those plans.
Yes.
And if the, if the cost of the sidewalks exceeded the amount of money left after the roadwork, that he would add to, he would add a financial surety, you know, to what's left in an amount sufficient to cover-
Fine.
-the estimated cost of the sidewalks, and that, basically, he was accepting responsibility for building the sidewalks.
It's acceptable.
Yeah, okay, I think we have it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
As stated by our councilor.
Yes, about what Bruce said.
Okay, we've had a motion, and a second by Mayor Beth, motion by Wendy, second by Mayor Beth to approve the motion as stated by our councilor. Before we take a vote, Mr. Hendricks, do you have a comment you'd like to make?
Yes.
Excuse me, sir.
Come to the mic, please, introduce yourself.
This one, I'm Jack Hendricks, magistrate for the fourth district where the Hunt Farm is, and I'm the one that's received a lot of those phone calls from the residents out there, and I have, I'm happy to see that we've, we've got some type of an agreement in, in order to get this done. I would like to clarify one thing Stephen said. The judge, Judge McKenny, has stated publicly, we can't do a thing until you all give us direction as to what to do. So as far as him agreeing to this exact agreement, you know, in, in theory, that may be actually correct, I don't know, because, but he stated in a public meeting that we could not do anything until we got direction from you, and we are willing, we have talked about it many times, we want to see these, these roads completed for our constituents out there because it, it's the right thing to do. The only concern I had, and Bruce has clarified that, and Stephen has agreed, was to make sure we had assurances that we wouldn't be back here in six months and ask the county or the city or anybody else to finish these sidewalks, because that, to me, is the developer's responsibility, not the taxpayers of Ball County. And anytime the court gets involved, or the city, you're using taxpayer money. So we don't ever want to get to that point on any development. So from what I've heard, and from what Bruce has outlined, and Steve has agreed to, I think this agreement will be fine, once you give us direction. Dwayne Campbell has already got some of these prices. Now, from what we understand, Blacktop Factory won't even open till April, so the sooner this is moved on, the better, but as far as your body is concerned, because it's got to come to us, and then the fiscal court's going to have to vote on it, which may not be an issue, but it could be, who knows? So I think the sooner we move on it, the better off we'll be for everybody, and these agreements, this agreement, once the additions are made that your attorneys suggested, I think will be in, in good order. However, as I say, the April opening date for the Blacktop Factory is, means that we're, the earliest we would get anything done out there would be April, probably later April. What do you think, Duane?
Probably late April.
Late April, so, but I think we can move on it, if you direct us to do that, then we will do that, and I think we can get it added to our agenda Tuesday and get this thing moving on, and I appreciate Steve and Jody working with, with everybody to get this resolved for our citizens out there, they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this issue before we vote? And I don't know if we have any residents from the Hunt Farm here today, but is there anyone in the audience like to speak with regard to this issue? Jody, you've got something else you'd like to say, sir?
Thank you for giving us the opportunity, you've come before you.
No problem, thank you. Any other questions, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous?
No.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. All in favor, raise your hand, please, one, two, three, four, five, six. Susie's recusing. Those opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Item L, subdivision plat approvals. Number one, Robert Lovejoy, subdivision plat, 23 acres located on Neal Road. Comments on that, Stephen? Nancy?
Good morning.
Morning, Nancy.
My leaves are hurt after I've sat so long. Mr. Lovejoy is dividing his 23-acre farm, and he is giving or selling to his daughter and son-in-law a 10-acre tract, and, that's it.
Technically correct, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, technically correct?
Yeah, technically correct, everything was met our requirements, and things have stayed revised by everything's good.
Okay, thank you. Questions, discussion, for Nancy on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Susie moves, we approve.
Second.
Uh, who's second? Wendy's second? Questions, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Nancy. Item two, Danville Holst LLC Preliminary Plat Bypass Center, section two.
Sorry, we'll go back and negotiate a little bit. These next few items are preliminary plat review, renewals, sometimes they don't end up on your agenda in this place, I think in maybe years past, they just renew business. These are actually preliminary plats, like I showed you, where they're asking for this annual renewal, so these next three items, the first one's bypass center, the next two are actually Mr. Sharp subdivisions, and then the last one's Hunt Farms, so these are preliminary plat renewals that we do annually, just to keep the plat, preliminary plat basically live and still approvable, and that's what those are. So they're just housekeeping to some degree, and as you heard earlier, that last one on Hunt Farms, the recommendation is not to renew that preliminary plat on Hunt Farms for the rest of those 109 lots, but those next three items, Mr. Chairman, are just preliminary plat renewals for those projects, and are all just housekeeping.
Just a point of clarification, for preliminary plat review, there is no letter of credit, there is no bond yet.
It's just that, they brought a preliminary plat, technical review, we've looked at it, y'all have looked at it, it's never been recorded, and it gets recorded in pieces, and those are just, keep those, and that's an annual renewal that we do on all preliminary plats, we've got several of them, that's just four of them right there.
Do you hear a motion?
I would make a motion to approve all the preliminary plat renewal requests, with the exception of the one associated with Hunt Farms, until we have the sidewalk issue approved.
Terry moves that we approve items two, three, and four, that's Danville Holst, Sharp Construction on Willow Springs, and Sharp Construction on Candlewood. Correct, Terry?
Yeah.
All right. And somebody seconds, Mayor Beth's second. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve items two, three, and four. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous, thank you. Do we need to even bring item five up, or simply leave it?
Item five in Hunt Farm?
Yes.
I think we formally need to say the preliminary approval has been terminated.
Okay.
Again, that, that ends that, section one, two, and three is all that's approved as of today, and a new preliminary plat would be filed, so it would be brand new some other day in the future.
Can we make a motion to table, or do we need-
No, you just vote it down.
I think we need to rescind it, deny it, with whatever term you want, whatever term our attorney thinks, but we would be rescinding that preliminary approval on the remainder of Hunt Farms, except for sections one, two, and three. The preliminary approval, basically what's left of the 109 lots, proposed lots, would be rescinded.
What's the correct terminology for that, Bruce, please?
Rescind is fine.
Okay, thank you. Hear a motion?
I'll make the motion, we rescind approval for the preliminary subdivision plat for Hunt Farms.
Okay, and Vince seconds, questions, discussion on the motion to rescind that request? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Susie recuses herself. Get that Jenny. Thank you. Where is Willow Springs, this is my information?
Candlewood.
Candlewood, is Willow Springs same thing?
Back section.
Back section, oh, okay.
I just, somehow I wondered where that was.
All right, thank you, Nancy. All right, item G, public hearing, what's that, Stephen? We got the nine?
We have none, just placeholder.
Okay, new business budget committee report, Stephen, excuse me, Terry?
Yeah, we did meet, and we are going to meet again after today's commissioner's meeting to discuss preliminary budget approval, our intent is to get that done and bring it forward to the commission at the March meeting.
Okay, thank you. Questions on the budget committee report? Item two, personnel committee report, we have met as a personnel committee and discussed evaluation forms, and that's still in the process of being completed, and myself, Susie, and Jeff, who couldn't be here today, have met, and we're working on that, I just wanted to share that with you. Item three, committee assignments. I saw something where I-
Now, let's jump in there, that's come up last week.
And we've got a couple still vacant, these first, what we call working committees now, budget, personnel's still, budget I think's good, but the advisory committee, again, might get that filled, chairman can take it from there, but again, that advisory committee's role is going to be looking at some of these documents, technical revisions and things, advisory committee's going to become a monthly working committee, we've already got a couple of folks that have already, I think the chair and vice chair are going to be on there, but again, that's the one, just want to point out, it's new and different, and have to become a working committee monthly, because we look at sub-reds, for example, or not, so.
Okay. Do we need another person on technical review? I mean, you got a blank there, I'm not overly sure if that's what we need or not.
We used to-
We'd get somebody, and again, I think, it's interesting, some of these are three-person committees, four words, whatever, whatever the members want to serve on, or you guys are interested in, advisory and technical review, obviously, we're going to meet every lot if we're allowed.
Okay, thank you. Vince, I need to put your name someplace, please.
Well, I've tried to, but I'm not in town as much, you know, I, I, I don't know, what's the advisor, what?
Technical reviews are Thursday meeting, isn't it?
We used to rotate that.
Yeah, it does, too.
And that was, that seemed to work, I mean, we used to rotate it, but it'd be good to maybe have the same person, because then they would have more knowledge, you know, or have two people. or have two people, and one person could make it each time, for sure, or something like that, because I'd be willing to do that, but I'm never sure, because of my travel schedule, playing, doing concerts and stuff, I just don't even know what days I'm going to be here, except landing and zoning is put in my calendar for the whole year.
Okay, Vince is off all committees.
Yeah, that's the only reason I say that, because I don't want to mess up anything.
Well, you wouldn't mess up anything, I mean.
No, we wouldn't mess up anything. We can accommodate whatever you guys want, how you guys want to serve on these committees, but advisory, I think, is just one we want to get rolling, because we've got stuff in the hopper ready to go, and I'm going to even make that under announcements again, you've got something, this Perryville Future Land Use Map is ready, and this is where the advisory committees want to play a role, where that committee's stuck for its here, that are technical amendments.
When do, when do these committees meet?
We'll set it up there, we don't have that one full, and then we'll send an email out to the committee members, hey, what's going to work, and you guys can get a set schedule on that.
Right, now.
Technical review is two weeks before planning mission.
So technical review, we used to do like a rotation of each member. Are we not doing that anymore?
I, since I've been here, it's just been hit or miss.
Okay.
There was two members at one point, last couple meetings, there's been two members. How the rotation worked didn't work.
Can we get the schedule, you know, like a separate one that tells us just when the technical ones are, and then look at it? I'd be more than happy to do it if I'm here, I mean.
Technical review is always every, before every.
Two weeks before? So it's right in the middle of the month, so.
Every, and then what would your technical review then?
So it's on Wednesday.
Hey, Vince, Vince, why don't you let me do technical review and you be my backup?
All right, that'd be great.
Good enough?
Perfect.
Okay.
Then we'd have to talk.
Jeff and I are both already on the advisory committee, and anyone else that wants to serve on that, you're more than welcome to do so, and there's no specific number. But Stephen, that's going to be with the mayor and not.
No, no, we initially talked about having a municipal board member, city council.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
They've never really got that worked through, they've got a lot of other things going on.
Okay.
We're going to keep it in-house for right now.
Okay, just in-house then?
Just us, and again, the sub-rig amendment is ready to go, to deal with the stuff we just talked about, comp plan's got a minor tweak we want to do with this Perryville thing, so that's what the advisory committee's going to do. It's appropriate if it's just you guys, because this is what we do with these documents. It'd be nice if we had other folks on, citizens, for example, but right now, three, four, five, ten, four, five, we just want to get rolling and look at this stuff, and get a discussion going, or then I'll bring us the planning mission proposal.
So if anyone else wants to be a part of that, you're more than welcome. There's no limit.
I mean, I'm happy to be on it, if you need another person.
Well, I'd say, I don't know if there's any specific number we need or don't need, it's just a matter of whoever wants to give us more of their time. All right? Anything else on the committees? All right, transportation committee hasn't met in two and a half, three years. The main focus of that transportation committee group was when the proposal from the state was to consolidate Main Street, have a center turn lane. We met almost every week there for about a year, but once that went away, then the committee sort of has dissolved, but it was something that the mayor and the county judge executive wanted to have, and we had about 15, 18 members on that, but it hadn't met for close to three years now, I guess, or so. And I just thought I'd share it. Anything else?
That regional transportation committee, is that on there still, too, on your list?
No.
Bluegrass ad, you put that off?
Yeah.
Okay. I went to that this past month, Terry served on that, I've been a representative, Bluegrass ad, I guess, regional planning council.
Right.
So I went to this last month, and I wish I'd have got my hour back, because this council was wasting my time to go up there. Our group is not functioning what I envisioned, they would be, it was just five or six people showed up and started late, had a topic, it was whatever. I guess I went, and I think you've gone in the past, maybe you've experienced.
Only one.
So they've asked that somebody serve on that, technically from our county, either the planning commissioner or the director, and I'm fine with serving on it, but I'm going, if it's me, I'm going to pick or choose, because that was not the best use of my time to drive to Lexington, and show up, and start late, and have no, no relationship I do on a daily basis, so I'm not sure what that group's real function is, the regional planning council. But we didn't even have members there from Lexington or most of the cities, we just had like five people show up, random counties, we talked about, basically, they just all just talked about what they've been doing the last month or two.
Can't they Skype it or something? I mean, that's crazy.
I don't know, I don't know what really that role is, but we are supposed, we're supposed to have a member assigned to that, and again, Terry has served as that member, and they said it can be the director, the planning commissioner, but it's the regional planning council.
Yeah, I can, I can continue to be honest, my impression when I attended it was, in general, the commission doesn't have enough knowledge to join in on the detailed discussions that they had when I was there, just because we don't fully understand the background of the regulations and.
Is Peter Beatty the chairman of that committee?
I don't know who the chairman was officially, there was a Bluegrass ad representative in the room, there were a handful of planning directors, and one planning commissioner from Justin County, I believe, and we did, we much except chit-chat, gossip, and catch-up. So, next agenda, again, I'm going to be real selective on what's on the agenda, if it looks like a good item, then I'm going to go, and if not, I'm going to recommend you just sort of pick and choose when you go up there.
You can put my name down as an alternate to you.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Another item under committees and officers, we need to elect a chair and a vice chair at the March meeting. I'd like to do that when everyone is present. Some of you are new, since we elected a chair and a vice chair, and the way we have done that in the past is we just simply had a nomination, or nominations from the commission and vote this here in part of the public meeting. And then another suggestion has been made, that we have a election committee appointed to nominate officers. I'm fine with either one of those, it's worked really easy, the way we've done it in the past, unless there's a strong reason not to, I'd just soon go ahead and do it that way, simple and easy to do. So I would like, we would elect officers at the May meeting, excuse me, at the March meeting, for chair and vice chair. Any other good for the order?
Hey, Derek.
Yes?
Are you two announcing? Yeah, I got one announcement at the very end, if you're done.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so, mentioned Perryville, I just need to, I want to get this out here so the media catches this. So we've been working with Perryville on the Future Land Use Map, I've been meeting with a working committee of citizens and some couple local officials. Here's what we've done to the Perryville Future Land Use Map as an exercise, to get it revised, based on what some local officials like to see down there, Future Land Use Map, that's the 2017, wherever it started, and here's where we're at, before and after. So we've got a great proposal that the local officials, what our next step is, we're going to have a public open house. So before this comes to the planning commission to formally amend the Future Land Use Map, what the mayor has directed me and a couple council members, is we're going to have an open house in Perryville on February 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock, at the community center. And I'm going to sit down with the paper, hopefully in the future, and get this a little more formal, but the plan is to have an open house, let citizens come in, and we're going to, one by one, talk to them about what the Future Land Use Map is, how it affects their community, and why we're proposing to revise it. Ultimately, after that open house, if it's successful, then ultimately, that amendment would come back to the planning commission for you guys to formally amend the Future Land Use Map for the city of Perryville. And I would want to run that through the advisory committee after that public open house. We're also working on the zoning map revision to coincide with where they'd like to see their community trend to for future land use and zoning. So that's kind of some big stuff, and that's been happening kind of behind the scenes every week, I've been meeting with a working committee. So again, February 22nd, 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock, and that's going to be a community, that's going to be an open house on the proposed Future Land Use Map amendment. We're not going to talk about zoning, no, it's going to be in Perryville, in their town, at their community center. That's 216 Beale Street. And the way it's going to work, the mayor, myself, the commission, we're all going to have stations, we're going to have these maps on the wall in bigger form, and we're literally going to explain to people why we've gone from this map to this version, and it's very different. And again, when the Future Land Use Map was adopted in 2017, the Danville map got a lot of attention, the county map, but the Perryville map was just sort of rehashed from 2007. There's an awful lot of yellow on that map, and they've got some other desired future land uses they'd like to see in their community. There's also some new terms, mixed use, so there's some creative new products on this map that don't exist on any other Future Land Use Map. We've been working on this for a couple months, so that's what they want to see happen next, is an open house, and then ultimately, as an application, an amendment to the comp plan,